I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, July 10, 2017, and the time is 7:00 PM. Dr. Hillman, there were a few items in the table file.
Yes, in the table file tonight you mostly have personnel appointments, increase, decrease, and changes of position, and other various personnel items.
Okay, thank you very much. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We now have the opportunity for public comments. This is a chance for anyone residing in the Northfield Public School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Seeing no one come forward, we will move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packet minutes of the regular school board meeting held on Monday, June 12, 2017. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by Jeff. Is there a second? Second by Margaret. Any discussion or comments? All those in favor of approving the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on Monday, June 12, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Despite the July timeframe, are there announcements and recognitions?
Yes, I just have one announcement for board members' information. We have been invited as a member of the Chamber of Commerce to participate in the annual Crazy Days celebration downtown on July 27. And so after talking with the Chamber, we'll actually be having a table at Crazy Days. Now, I know it's common for businesses and to have giveaways or those kinds of things. Of course, as a public entity, we won't be able to do that kind of thing, but what we will be doing is staffing a table, having information about the school district, and really just trying to engage the community. I've invited our administrative team to take shifts during that morning to just be able to interact with folks. If board members have an interest in joining us, if you can contact me directly, because of course we'd have to make sure there was no more than three of you there at any one time, you don't have to. I'm just offering it so that you know that we have it. If that's something you're interested in letting me know, my understanding is that the prime shift would be the early one. I've been told that we need to make sure that we're there by 7:00 because people come for the deals early. So if you have an interest in that, please let me know, and we're going to be putting together a shift schedule. And again, we're going to try to do this at the larger Chamber events like the Holman Garden Show and some of the other pieces that they do simply as a community outreach component, that we have a chance to talk to parents and other community members about the school system, and also we know that it draws people in from out of town. And if we can have that positive conversation with someone who is here in town visiting, maybe they would choose to move here and use our school system for their kids as well. So July 27, and if you have an interest, feel free to contact me, and I can let you know more details.
Excellent. I think that's a really great idea. Do board members have any announcements of their own? Okay, then we'll move on for our items for discussion and report this evening. First, we have social-emotional learning update, the Peer Helper Program. And here to present is Northfield High School's school psychologist, Carrie Duba.
I'm really excited to be here tonight to talk about the Peer Helper Program in particular. We have been making strides at the high school in planning for social-emotional learning. It is, as we've discussed before, when I've been here before, we've talked about how complex it is at the high school, because there are a variety of needs, from mental health to just that emotional regulation, to the college and career readiness, and all of those components. So we have been carefully, as a team, looking at our options. And one of the first programs that rose to the surface that we knew we wanted to implement was the Peer Helper Program. The Peer Helper Program is modeled after peer helper programs that have been around in a variety of capacities for a long time. They are on the Registry of Evidence-Proven Practices, and the Peer Helper Program at the high school in particular maps so well on what we've been already doing with our academic student coaches, that it seemed like a really natural fit. But before we move forward, we really wanted to do something that we knew had good evidence of effectiveness, and it works with adolescents and diverse populations. And down at the bottom, you can see there are measurable social-emotional and chemical health outcomes that have been proven from using a Peer Helper Program. Even farther down, that you can't really see, is one of the things we did was survey some demographically matched high schools in our area who were doing a Peer Helper Program. So Hastings started one about six years ago. Hudson has been doing it for 20 years, which is astonishing to me. And then St. Croix Valley ALC is doing a Peer Helper Program. I think I say something more about that later. So Peer Helpers, the program that we're using is one that's been developed out of Hazleton. And the premise of a Peer Helper Program is kind of genius. I think it's just wonderful, actually. So what the Peer Helper Program does is it identifies those natural helpers that are already in the community of our student body. And when we talk about typical adolescent behavior, what we know is that when students encounter these sort of social-emotional challenges, their first response is to find a peer that they trust, that they can talk to. And so then what this Peer Helper Program out of Hazleton has done is they say, "You can ask your adults who you think your peer helpers are, but you will most likely be wrong. So the best thing to do is to go to the students." And this, I think, is where the real true genius is, is you go to the students and you say, "Who are those kids that you seek out when you have troubles, and who are excel at being listeners?" And the effect of that, then, is that you end up with these natural helpers that are in the student community that represent a wide variety of cohorts. And so there are students that look like students that their peer group, and so it's a natural connection for them, which I think is great. And then the Peer Helpers behave in a way that peers do. And so we leverage a very typical behavior. We are mapping it onto something that we have developed, the capacity and infrastructure, through our academic student coaching program. And we broaden the number of students that we have trained, which I think is great, because you can see up here, we have some goals of the program, but the Peer Helpers are really our first intervention with our students. So the actual goals of the Peer Helper Program are to prevent some of the problems of adolescence, which I just think seems so ambitious, because adolescence seems very fraught, and we know it is. It's a really, really challenging time. And so the fact is that we can get some students in there who are trained to help stabilize a process that we know can be very unstable, this sort of growth through adolescence, and to intervene effectively with troubled friends. And what that means is that these Peer Helpers, the crux of this program is the training. It is an intensive two-day training that has to be repeated annually, and Hazleton provides ongoing support and training. But the training is key, because we need to move them from this natural behavior that they already have and expand their skill repertoire, and the tools that they have at their disposal in responding to their friends who are in trouble, or who are feeling troubled. And so that means helping them identify their referrals, who are the people that they connect those students to, how do they respond when students talk about risky behaviors, all of those things. So we give them some tools, so they are intervening effectively with their peers. And then this piece, I think, is also a really well-thought-out piece, and that is that these students who are in our population, who are the natural helpers, who are the listeners, right, whose we like to say their superpower is being a friend, it comes sometimes at some cost to them. And they become the keeper of secrets, and they hold on to problems, and they don't know what to do. And so this helps them learn how to take care of themselves when they're in this helping capacity, and also to find their partner adults that will help them to share that burden. And so I think that's really great. And in learning how to take care of themselves, then they can also impart that knowledge and that bit of training to their peers. Like, this is what you do to help take care of yourself. And then the other goal is for the students to develop the skills to be leaders, and for improving their school and their community. Now, I really am grateful for all of the things that we've been able to do with our academic student coaches and our academic interventions. And we know that we've been having a lot of success with those programs. We can move the needle a little bit more, when we can start addressing these social-emotional concerns, because sometimes that's the hurdle. And it's not that I don't know calculus, it's that I'm freaking out about something else, and I don't really want to learn calculus right now. And so this is our one first step, but also we have these fantastic academic student coaches who are just near and dear to my heart, and that program is fantastic. And we're going to supplement it with the not-intuitive leaders that have been among us all along, that we didn't realize. And so then we end up with this broad array of student leaders. And I think we have some great student leadership programs. I do want to emphasize that with Link and Rally and all of that, but in particular, these students are trained, in particular, to be interveners. And I think having that group will help to stabilize our student population overall. And that's pretty exciting to me. So I'm always about, like, how will we measure our success? Even though, I will say, we are cautious about rushing to measurement, just because the skills that we're learning are always in process. And we don't want skills... When we go to students and ask them about what they've learned in terms of their sort of emotional regulation, what happens is we tend to get this ceiling effect right away, where kids go like, "I didn't have that skill. Now I'm awesome at that skill." And you've got nowhere to go for growth. And so we just really want to try to be sensitive to what we're measuring. Now, we have data that is right here with us that has an impact on our academic success and everything, and it's our chronic absenteeism, the percentage of our students who are gone, 10% to 15% of the school days. And then, of course, we have been monitoring our percent of students who are passing all over their classes for several years now. The other data that we have available to us is the Minnesota Student Survey and the Developmental Assets Profile. And I have referenced these before when I've spoken to you, but these are, in particular, the responses that we look for, these four responses. What's interesting is as I look more and more into how we can make sure that what we're doing is having a good, positive impact, and I read about this, going to the students and engaging them in their Minnesota Student Survey data, and going to the students and engaging them about all of this data is kind of the step we need to take. And we need to say, "This is how we were responding. What did that mean? And what do we need to have in place in order to change that response pattern?" So that's kind of an exciting opportunity. That's part of this whole thing. Let's say this, our academic student coaches, we have about, we log about 1,500 to 2,000 academic student coaching contacts a year. And the Peer Helper Programs in Hudson and Hastings report between 1,000 and 3,000 documented Peer Helper contacts a year. So I think about all of those interactions that are occurring with students who are trained to help and to move them on, if necessary, to the school psychologist, the school social worker, the school counselors, the school nurse, our chemical health counselor, all of that, I think is a really great advantage of our programs. So that is where we are. We are looking to have our first training this October. It's two days. We need to give our students some time to help identify their natural leaders that are among them, their natural helpers that are in the student population, and then have our first training in October, and have them up and serving their student community by November, at the beginning of November.
Thanks, Carrie. Questions, comments board members have?
Helen. So I'm really excited about this, and I liked the idea that you were talking about, sharing the data with them in some way and getting them to reflect on it. I'm curious, this really is, the linchpin is finding these natural helpers. And you mentioned at the end, you said, "So that the students can identify." So is there sort of a, do you have a framework or a way that you think that's going to...
Sure. So we do have class meetings that occur like in the first week, and that's a real, a great opportunity. We talk about the academic student coaches at that, and I think we can present this idea and survey the students. The Hazleton trainer is fantastic, and he said, "You have to really trust the students." And so the presentation to the staff actually is important, too, because these may not, these will not be the obvious kids, and they will not be, like, choosing the academic student coaches is, you know, pretty cut and dry. But getting these kids identified and feeling confident to be leaders, helping their peers is a really important step.
Margaret.
I think this is wonderful, because as we all know, since the beginning of time, teens turn to their peers before they'll turn to an adult. Talk to me more about, I think very literally, and when you say between people in similar situations, so might there be a teen who has been living sober for a few years, that would be the person that a teen struggling with substance abuse would turn to? Is that an example or not?
Well, I think there are some things that we have to be, and I don't, I can't answer that directly. I think there are some things, my first reaction to that is like, oh, confidentiality, right? You know, that kind of freaks me out a little bit. But I would say that we, our structure, as we planned to start it out, is to have these Peer Helpers available all day, every hour, and it's sort of like, who's there? But we also have a system that we will be putting in place where they can make appointments with peers that they choose. And so I think maybe not ones that the adults are too busy manipulating and allowing them to kind of choose the ones and set up times where they can meet.
Okay. But we're looking at, when you say people in similar situations...
I mean adolescents.
Yeah, that.
Yeah.
So adolescents who have struggled with emotional issues, is that what you mean by that?
Right. And I think adolescents that have struggled with being an adolescent. I mean, there are, I think there will, these, there are things that resonate universally, social and emotional concerns.
And that they swim in a different fishbowl than we did when we were adolescents.
Oh, my, yes.
Yeah. Okay. So thank you. I just needed to get a better picture in my head of what that phrase meant, so thank you.
That's a great question. Other questions, comments board members have?
Carrie, this is just amazing, and I love every time you come to the board, because you have such a wonderful passion and energy, and you also have the context of the data and the evidence of practice and everything good. And I'm glad Margaret asked a little bit about the nuts and bolts of the process. Is there some sort of a working number that you try to reach in terms of total? Have they given you that in terms of student body size, or do you just sort of not really force it if that number's not there?
Right. We look for, we're going to look for 25, 25 to 26. And that actually is driven more by how the cohort itself can support one another. If it gets too much larger, you don't get the cohesiveness to the group, and if it's smaller, they're just spread too thin.
Okay. And would you envision having seniors as a part of that with just the one year of training and, you know, opportunity to be a part of it, or would you look more towards juniors down?
We actually will start with seniors, which is why they have the training every year, because they'll be bringing new kids on. And isn't that sort of a wonderful thing, that those seniors will move on to wherever their secondary...
Oh, absolutely. And I love that, because often it's like, well, no, we don't want to do seniors, because they're only going to be here a year, and we won't know, you know, whatever. So you're just saying the first group would just be seniors?
No, I think the first group, we will attempt to have students, probably not ninth graders, we will attempt to have students that, you know, cover, you know, at least 10 through 12. We'll take guidance on the ninth graders. But we will have, so the seniors will get one-year service out of them. But most kids come back as Peer Helpers, so we could get three years or more of service, which I think is astonishing, from a 10th grader.
This is just super exciting. The one thing I also wanted to ask in Joel Lear's Site Improvement Plan, which, you know, he's presenting next, he had talked about this as the first step. Do you envision the next step of SEL at the high school, or are you waiting to see how this does before you move forward?
Right. Oh, thanks for asking that question. We have met as a team, and we've sort of roughed out and mapped out what we want to do. This is considered a universal, so it's a kind of, it's a sort of a tier one, if you want to think about it in those terms, a tier one plus, in a way, because all students have access to it, and it just improves our referral system overall for everybody. And then we have mapped out, from the social-emotional, mental health perspective, what would be the natural next step. And it's about intensifying the kind of support required for the students that are identified through a Peer Helper Program, for example. If we have a certain type of student or a certain issue that continues to arise, then we have, we've actually, in a lot of different ways, staff, space, logistics, talked about what the next step is for supporting those students.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Dr. Hillman?
So again, we just all know that Carrie is a rock star, so we love having her here, because what I really appreciate about what Carrie's saying, too, and I want to emphasize this, because this is something that, we often talk about what we do well, and we like to also not hide our worth and say the things that we don't do well as a district, but one of the things we struggle with is embedding training in an ongoing way across the system. So we will talk that, oh, we did that training already, well, we did that training five years ago, and now we have a bunch of new staff who have not had that particular training. So that's an area of focus for Director of Teaching and Learning, Mary Hansen, and I to be looking at, how can we make sure that for the adults in the system, how can we make sure that our training is ongoing? And you notice with Carrie's presentation, that embedded training every year, because we're not going to take it for granted. Even kids who have had the training before, I'm going to assume, can get refresher. That makes the program sustainable, which is great. I think the other piece that I just want to point out, it was one year ago, at the first board meeting in July, that you authorized us to start the strategic planning process. And one year later, this fall, we will have a full K-12 social-emotional learning approach that was identified during the strategic planning process last fall and approved by you as a near-term priority, social-emotional health overall. We have the K-8 formal curriculum starting this fall, which you've heard about, and we had given the high school a one-year reprieve, because there was a number of different things that they needed to look at for the fully functioning system. But here's an example of how a school has taken the strategic plan to heart, and said, "We can't maybe operationalize everything we would like in the first year." But they went out, they sought the program, they figured out how to do it, and they have a program starting in the fall. So I love it when we can highlight the fact that folks who are working with students in the buildings are seeing the strategic plan, they're looking at, "How can we operationalize the strategic plan in our area right now?" And there couldn't, in my opinion, there couldn't be a better example of it than what Carrie presented tonight. So thank you, Carrie, for living the strategic plan.
And thank you, Carrie, for being willing to come in in July.
Yeah.
Okay. Any final questions or comments? Okay. Good. Thank you, Carrie.
So our next item for discussion is the Northfield Middle School and Northfield High School Site Improvement Plan reports. Who won or lost the coin toss?
I've got Greg's up first.
All right. So we will welcome Greg Gellino, Principal at Northfield Middle School.
Your items are the next in the packet, so I want people to be able to go on a chronological order.
... I can see. Sorry. I turned 50, so nothing's quite as easy.
The other one.
Okay. Good to know.
That one?
Yep. We're good. By the way, I think the picture prior to him saying that. It's a joke. My wife and youngest daughter and I hiked in the Grand Tetons right when school was out, and Joel was asking me how our vacation was, so I sent him a couple pictures of some bears, and I sent him this one, and he texted me back saying, and then sent me a link, saying, "Hey, you got to enter this into the National Park System photo contest." But my daughter took it home, and it was really unclear. That's why I said, I chose the picture prior to him saying that. Well, good evening. And before I kind of get started, we'll review our goals from last year and then jump into our goals for this coming year. But I'm going to preface this based on this fact, that our MCA data is embargoed until August 7. So if I sound a little bit like a really bad salesperson, who talks a lot, but doesn't really tell you any details, that's intentional. That's because of this. But we'll do, I'll do the best I can to kind of give you a brief overview. But here's what we have. We have our two, our four goals that we used last year. The top two are the academic ones, which I'll just talk real general. And I know Hope, I'm guessing Hope will be doing a presentation on our district MCA data, but it's data that, since I've seen it, that I'm pretty excited about. Obviously, there's things that we can still work on, that will always be the case, but I'm excited that, I feel that we've made some significant gains in both these areas and some other areas, that probably better than we've seen in the past several years. So I am excited about that, but it's kind of one of those things, trust me, it's gonna, it'll be good stuff. So, but that being said, I'll go to three and four. Three and four is our climate goals, and these two will kind of sunset this year. The first one was, we wanted to measure somehow with our PBIS program, our Northfield NMS Pride Program, how students are doing with kind of internalizing the acronym PRIDE. And we saw great, great improvements. Students were really getting the hang of it, and I still think they do. But comparing from the beginning of last year to the end of last year, we did see a drop. I don't think that's unusual, given the time of year and given the second year of the program. However, the interesting piece of that is if we broke down the data a little bit farther and really looked at each individual letter, and there's a really high percentage, 70% up to like 85% of the kids that knew, if you look individually, and just putting them all together, that could be the time of year, who knows? So, but we're moving on from this goal, but it's not, it's a little bit disappointing, but yet I still think we're on a good track moving forward. The number four was, we really wanted to work on getting our participation in, not only in just athletics, but academic activities, including the web program, including student council, including Honors Choir. We included the whole gamut. Our site improvement team really felt strongly that that, when we're going to measure this, is to include everything. So I kind of went back a few years, and we're pretty steady. We're within about a percentage or two of 68%, give or take 1% or 2% every year of participation. And that's a large number when you're talking, we're currently at over 970 students at the middle school, so that's a large number. Interesting tidbit on this goal, that's not part of this one, that we didn't have to measure, was the fact that we also looked at, okay, how many multiple activities are students in? And we had nearly 20% of our students involved in two activities, and then we had 16%, a little over 16%, that are actually involved in three or more activities. So kids are getting involved, and we all know that that's a key to just staying connected to your school, building a sense of community, and one of the positive effects of that is doing good academic stuff. As I reflected upon how we got to where we were and the results that we've received, here's some just thoughts that I have. I think a big part of the academic success is really having that growth mindset that Dr. Hillman kind of laid out for us at the beginning of the year. I think the middle school staff has really taken that to heart and really ran with that. And giving staff permission to try different things, that wasn't real easy, I had to do a little sales job, saying, "You know, no, I'm serious. I want you to try it. Good, bad, try something different. If you never try something different, if you never take that risk, you're never going to improve, you're just going to stay status quo." I think a big part of the academic success is really having that growth mindset that Dr. Hillman kind of laid out for us at the beginning of the year. I think the middle school staff has really taken that to heart and really ran with that. And giving staff permission to try different things, that wasn't real easy. It had to do with sales jobs, saying, you know, no, I'm serious. I want you to try it. Good, bad, try something different. If you never try something different, if you never take that risk, you're never going to improve, you're just going to stay status quo. So people did. They started trying different things. And I think that was a big part of it. And through that process throughout the year, through the PLC process and having conversations, I really think the vast majority of our staff really started asking the question, what if? Why? And then looking at results, what can we do about it? What can we do differently to kind of keep moving that needle? If it went down, okay, why did it go down? If it went up, how can we move it even farther? Or why did it go up? So we can continue to do those things. So those are questions that we started to see being asked. And then the last one is, people aren't afraid of the data. You know, it's never all going to be good news. I know in seventh grade, they were a little bit bummed out when the results came back. But, you know, we could find some positives in the results, but it wasn't what they were hoping for. But instead of kind of hanging their head, they're like, okay, what do we have to do now? What's next? And that's really the mindset that I think is driving the middle school right now, and that's something that I'm proud of our staff for. And I think it's gonna, we're going to see improvement just moving forward, year after year. Looking into this coming year, four goals we have. We're going to keep the top two the same as this previous year, with one small exception. The number two on there, working on the gap, we did a 10% target for this past year, but we're going to drop it down to five. 10's a pretty good jump. It's pretty high bar, even though, I'll say unofficially, that we may have met it in a couple of spots. But to be maybe a little bit more realistic, 5% I think is something that's a little bit more attainable. So we did drop that. But I think this is something that our site improvement team has decided that we'd like to at least continue for three years. So this will be the second of the three years for these two goals, that we, again, that we can kind of compare year to year and make sure, not only are we just, is it a one and done deal? Or is it something that we're on to something, and it'll keep kind of rolling into a continuous improvement? And then the climate goals, as I've mentioned, we're, we are adjusting those or changing those. The first one is, we really want to build a sense of community at the middle school. And this will be a little bit of a challenge. We had a long discussion in our site improvement team and with our staff, is how in the world do we measure this? And we're going to do the best we can to kind of survey parents, survey students, and see what they're feeling. And that'll be at the end of the year. And there's a, one of our goals then, as a student support, which is our guidance council, our school social worker, our, I think I hit them all, and then administration, as well as our staff, is we want to plan some big events for the whole school. And we do that now, but we want to be really systematic to really target them specific times of the year to kind of keep the ball rolling. And hopefully then we can have an effect to, like I said, build that sense of community. And it's community, little community, meaning inside the school, inside the middle school. And then the next one, we also want to really work on transition. And that was something that, again, our site improvement team felt really strongly about. And originally, I have to say, it started out as, through our site improvement team, transition between fifth grade and sixth grade. And it went to the staff, and the staff said, what about transition to six to seven, and seven to eight? And then eight to nine? So we brought it back to site improvement team, and they totally, full-heartedly agreed, saying, yeah, why not? Let's work on them all. So that's why this is here. There'll be a survey, again, be a little bit of a challenge to do this, but we will, through surveys of parents and students, both at the beginning of this year, after people kind of transition in. And then, again, we probably won't get the results until the next year, when we can survey the new transition periods with the families. So those are our goals. How are we going to reach them? Here's just a couple of ways. First, continue to work with our MTSS team, both in reading and math with our interventions. I'm going to talk a couple of things about this one and the second one as well. As we started using a web-based program in reading, it's called Success Maker, and in math, it's Think Through Math. Think Through Math started actually a year before Success Maker. And Think Through Math, we saw results really quickly. Kids are engaged with it. We used our intervention students that work with Dan Myers with our MTSS, made great strides. So we gave all of our sixth graders this program last year. And again, I can't officially comment on that, other than the fact, I'll say that we are going to continue with the program. We're pretty happy with what we saw. And some of the benefits that I can tell you about is, we've had fewer students that registered for our Pre-Algebra A class, going from sixth to seventh grade than we have in years past. As well as, if you look at the top end, we had students that didn't quite make it into the Enriched program as a sixth grader, that we kind of targeted them at sixth grade and kind of kept them together. And because they were successful in their Math VI class, as well as performed well on their MCAs, we gave an opportunity through this Think Through Math to do some summer work on this web-based program. And if they can, Dan Myers created a folder for them, a Pre-Algebra folder, so these students are able to do the work over the summer. And as long as they complete that work by the beginning of August, we will actually move them back up into that, not back up, we'll move them up to the Enriched program that they just missed the year before. So it's really a good motivator for some of these students. It really, we've had multiple students already that Dan monitors over the summer, that shoots me an email saying, hey, they're good to go. And there's some that haven't. And that's one of the reasons we're doing it. If they're not motivated, they won't finish this, but they will progress like they should over the summer. In which case, then it's better for them to stay right where they're at mathematically. For Success Maker, which is the reading component of this, it's by a different company. There's some good and bad to that. We have some concerns. The number one concern with that program was student feedback. Students are not real motivated with it. There was good out of the chute, and then it kind of, the motivation kind of waned throughout the year. We've talked to the company, they hadn't made any adjustments about it. So we're still looking at some other programs. But in the meantime, we are still going to, for one of our sixth grade teams, we will continue to use it. And the other sixth grade team would like to do something more internally until we find something different. So I'm okay with that, to kind of, it'll be a good judge, to see just how much of an effect this program had. As far as our MTSS and Rose Turner Cliff, we are looking at a couple of different options. So that's kind of still up in the air, whether she will continue with Success Maker, or there's a couple of different options for her students, given the level they're at. They have a few more options. So she is also looking at that. But regardless, it's another tool that students can use. Our hope is to make it, that we can find something that's closer to the Think Through Math, that can be utilized even during the summer, something maybe a little more engaging and giving good feedback to students, because that's a pretty key component. Some other things we're going to be doing to work at on our academic goals is, to work individually with some PLCs. I know Rose is going to pass to join a couple, there are one in particular PLC, our seventh grade PLC, English, and see if she can help them with their gap, and kind of see if they can address that, and how, what are some strategies to do that? As well as, we're going to look at EL in addition, and see if we can work with them, and really kind of target some specific groups of students, and see, again, take a risk a little bit, and see if we can move the needle. Our staff development coming up, I've kind of targeted a couple of different areas for this coming year. One is reading and the content area. I know several years ago, we did staff development on this, and I think it's time to revisit it. Really give teachers strategies. There's teachers even in Fayette that work in vocabulary, in facts. I know Jackie Magnuson worked with a reading group this past year for her PLC. And they're really, they're kind of asking for some strategies to connect with some of our building goals. And so I think it's a good time to revisit that and do some things along those lines. The second one, just a side thing, is really, we're going to take a look at grades, and grading, and what does a grade mean? Doesn't necessarily pertain to this, but just as an FYI. And as far as how we're going to measure that, we'll continue with the MCA and the map. They're not perfect systems, they're not perfect tools to use. However, those two items combined with the regular classroom assessments, and with our interventions, we have our own assessments we have to use throughout the year as well. It gives us, I think, a pretty good picture, and gives us a pretty good idea of what direction we should be going. And with that, I am done. So.
That's right.
Questions?
Board members, questions, comments? Margaret?
I'm going to preface this, just by, my question's just by saying, I think what you guys are able to do at the middle school is amazing, because they're really a unique population. So.
They are. They're fun.
Yeah. They are. And still a little bit afraid of authority, just a little bit. So I'm glad that you gave us this part before the pretty color pictures, because it kind of fleshed it out. And when I was reading through it and saw that, how many kids didn't know what MS, NMS Pride stood for, I thought, well, I don't either. So I kind of felt sort of bad. But when I get down to the activities, do you know why 31% of the kids are in zero activities? And I'm looking ahead at, you know, the pride survey that will be given out. If these kids are feeling very disconnected, they're, are they very even likely to fill out the survey? So like, I'm thinking sort of a torch model is, getting in there, figure out what are the obstacles to those kids, those disconnected kids getting into activities? And how do you do that if they won't fill out a survey?
I can, I'll give our middle school students kudos. When we do surveys, it amazes me every time we do a survey, because we do a fair number of them. Our students fill them out. We get such a high, we get over 80% of our kids that fill them out, and sometimes well higher than that even. I think one of the surveys we did this past year, we hit over 90. And so our students are really good about that. And I think one of the keys for us is, we have our morning announcements. And specifically, every Monday we do, it's NMS Pride on our morning news. So we focus in on Pride. We don't, we kind of hit the bare bones, and then we do something, whether it be a video or something that has to do with Pride and good citizenship. And more social, emotional as well. And so when we do a survey, we use that time. So the students are kind of all captivated, they've all, they're all there. So any student we typically miss, it's typically because they're absent. And then we, we don't go back. We get such a high percentage, we could go back. To answer your question on why some students are engaged, that would have been a terrific question. I have a hypothesis, at least for some of them, a group that I thought of after the fact, is I didn't include Middle School Youth Center. And so there is a group of students, I know for a fact, aren't involved in any of the categories that we asked about, but they're after school every single day. And so they technically should have been counted as being connected to our school.
That makes sense, yeah.
So that's, part of it is, again, that's a trick of trying to write the appropriate survey to give you the correct results.
Yeah, right. Because they're doing activity.
Oh, yeah. They're doing after-school, yeah, the plus program, and targeted services.
Okay. Thank you.
Rob?
I'm just wondering if you have the activity data broken down by grade level? Because it seems like perhaps as they get into eighth grade and there are more opportunities, more people are participating, or?
It was. I didn't bring it with me, so I can't give you exact numbers. But we did break it down by grade level. You are correct, eighth grade's a little bit higher, but it's not as much of a difference as you would think. And I attribute the difference more towards the athletic side of having more opportunities as an eighth grader. We still have a little bit of a gap of things that, lack of activities sixth graders can do on the athletic piece side of things. And that's a regional issue, where we just can't get teams to play. That's not unusual in Northfield.
Ellen?
So I was curious, you're also taking on some new things with the social, emotional learning and the career and college ready pieces. And how would, how do you think those fit into the, I mean, there isn't a natural, like, I couldn't connect them immediately to the goals, but I'm assuming that you kind of thought through, you're trying these new things, and you, you have these goals in mind for this site, so?
The social, emotional fits really nicely, actually, with our PBIS. The most clear, sixth grade's pretty clear, the social, emotional curriculum is being done through our sixth grade signs. And Mark Myangivan and Dan Coste have already connected with their teams, and they're very organized gentlemen to begin with. So they've already, since they do responsive classroom in sixth grade, it was a really good segue. So when they do their team time, which they do once a week typically, they'll be, when they hit certain units and certain topics, they will, that will be the topic of their team time. So they will connect across the board. Their, their team will use similar language. As far as for seventh and eighth grade, one of the things we'll be doing is, we'll be sending out, and sixth grade will be included in this, there'll be at least a minimum of monthly information sheets that go out both to families, that comes actually with the program itself. But as far as our staff goes, they'll get that, so they know what the parents and students are seeing. But then they're going to get some additional stuff from, from myself, that I will be getting through Lisa Wise, who's teaching at Dan Reese Graff. And so it's really keeping in front of our staff. My hope is that I'm going to challenge staff to have something in their classroom that pertains to social, emotional, and change it up every time they get something new from me. So something, whether it be on a whiteboard, whether it be on their, their classroom door, something that they're going to point out or recognize in their classroom throughout the year, to kind of show that, okay, it doesn't just happen in health. It's, you don't forget about it the second you leave Mr. Reese Graff's classroom, it's everywhere. And to kind of keep it in the front of people's minds. So that's kind of, at least our starting point, that we're going to do. The ramp-up piece, that is, it's maybe a little bit more challenging to connect to our goals. However, that being said, I think if students feel they have a good path, or they start feeling good about maybe the direction they're going, I think that, that, again, gets them more excited about school, gets them more connected, and really, I think it, the outcome is going to be a positive academic, as well as social, emotionally, to feel better about themselves.
And Greg, I think, if I can just jump into, I also think that what you just described is, in my view, is going to support the first climate goal. If you think about having a place where you can intentionally talk about that building of community and reinforce the quarterly activities and those kinds of things, I think that that is a strategy that I would assume is going to help support that first goal, because you're going to have a captive audience where they're talking about that, as opposed to it being an add-on in some other course. So I see the strategy and the new social, emotional learning portion of the health class, supporting that first climate goal.
Great. Thanks.
Other questions or comments?
Greg, yeah, I just wanted to, to say, you know, this, this is just really a great site improvement plan, and I wanted to say that I loved, under the SMART goal, how you directly aligned that with the strategic plan. That's really helpful. And I love that this process is more streamlined, and it's, and we're given a more, as Noel likes to say, the executive summary. Because this is really the way that we can, can pull this out and really think in a very, see in a very broad way what's happening at each of the buildings. So I really appreciate it. And I was really struck by the purpose that has been redefined of this site improvement plan, which is on the front, the first page. And I really like seeing how that, the purpose of the site improvement plan, again, is directly tied to the, to the district strategic plan. So really good work. And I also appreciate you sunsetting some goals and refreshing. I think that's really excellent. And the activity piece, I think for those of us who've had kids in the middle school, anytime there's an activity, you know, you sort of feel like it's well-attended when you're, the line is at the Northfield High School to turn into the middle school to pick your student up at 5:00 PM, you know? So it's going to be really fun to see what you guys kind of cook up there, because I think they're always well-attended. But I think you, you see that it's really critical, and to, you know, kind of have a new and different, fresh approach to that, and get a little bit more energy around that, I think is excellent. So really great site improvement plan, and I love that we're moving them up, starting in July. I think it's really, really great. I love the timing.
Thanks for doing it first.
Yes. So now you can take a deep breath and move on. And so, but I mean, to Greg's credit, his comment to Matt was, well, of course, I always start the year knowing what our, our school improvement plan is, so it's not a problem for me to be here in July. So, so excellent work. Thank you.
And if I can use this transition to Joel, just to point out, we did have one little hitch in our giddy up of the, of the school improvement plans being presented in July, and the fact that any of the MCA data, of course, is embargoed until August 7th. And so the fact is that, you know, Greg's building has often tied their data, as well as many of our elementary schools, to the MCA data. But we're, we can no longer allow that MCA release, data release schedule to dictate how we do school improvement plan. Because what's going to be great is everyone, when they come back on August 28th, and they have their meetings with their staff in August 29th. have their meetings with their staff in August 29th, we're laying out the school improvement plans, and this is what we're all rallying around this year. And even though people did have them ready before, when you approve them in November or December, if I'm a teacher in the building and thinking, "Wow, that, it just, there seems to be a..." And we all know the reasons and the history behind why it was done that way and it was not done for a poor reason, but we're happy to have seized the opportunity to do this. So, I gave Joel enough time to get ready and...
I told Greg that the picture of the Tittans was impressive. I told him if he wanted to be daring, he would have thrown up a picture of Dr. Hillman trying to surf in the Pacific Ocean earlier this...
Trying?
Well, you were on the board, I guess I would say.
So, I guess he needs no introduction, but just in case. Joel Lear, Northfield High School principal, here to present the site improvement plan.
He'll be here all week, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Julian. And thank you to the rest of the board members for allowing us to present. And I too, it's a little bit of a time warp, 24, or 48 hours ago, I was waking up in Joplin, Missouri, and now here I am, standing before you with the site improvement plan. So, but I do agree that it sets us up in a way that really allows us, we think about that first day of school, that first stretch of school being really a chance to get off on the right foot with students, with staff, with programs. And I think this is just another leg in that, that mix of opportunities to, to do the same with our goals for improvement. I think it's, after hearing Carrie talk, there were a number of things I just kind of wanted to add to it, and hearing Greg talk, there were a few things I wanted to add to it. And this is very linear, so I'm going to try to remember all of those random pieces as well as the, the linear model that is laid out for you. But one of the things that, actually, Carrie and I had a conversation toward the end of the school year as we were looking at the data that comes out of the, the progress report, and specifically that 94% in, you're going to see, I believe, I don't think we're working from live Google Docs, so you may see a number 73 in terms of students identified for intervention. That's actually 80. Anyway, but you're going to see 94% of students passing courses, 80% of MTSS students passing their courses. And we get to a point periodically where the programs we put in place to improve things, if you remember nine years ago, 10 years ago now, the academy was response to, and some of you are looking confused, we'll get to those numbers in a second. The academy model was meant to address a real specific problem at the ninth grade level in terms of failure rates across the ninth grade program. And it did, and did some leaps and bounds improvements in terms of how we addressed students and their success. And really, MTSS, PBIS, and now SEL are really all responses to the number that has shrunk but still exists. And then it shrinks and still exists. And so, there's a little bit of a, a sense of, "Oh, we're doing really great things, and now we got to do something just a little bit better to, to push that envelope." And so, every so often, every couple of years, we, we begin to see the same numbers presenting themselves. And so, I'll talk more about that specifically. But that's kind of what I'm addressing here, that we recognize we're a pretty good school. And, and what we believe is that we are capable of numbers that will demonstrate true greatness in terms of, of our performance as a school, as students, and also as staff. And so, what the site improvement plan does is allows us to take that idea pretty good and say, "What is great? What's missing?" And how do we then quantify that? Not only as a goal, but then also as, at the end of the process to say, "Have we been successful in identifying what it is we hope students do, will accomplish?" So, our goal from 1617 was that 96% of our students are overall, 9 through 12, and 85% of our students identified for intervention would pass all their classes. And this was, these are the two numbers that we were referring to earlier, our actual are 94 and 80%. So, 80% of the students that we identify for interventions passed all their courses. And so, short of the goal, but again, as we look at that idea of 96 working from a 94, 94 is right around where we have settled over the last two, three years as a 912 student body. And so, really, our response now isn't so much, "Well, what, how do we do what we're doing differently?" But it becomes, "How do we expand it? And how do we, how do we augment what we're doing so that we're addressing those little percentages of the population that aren't responding to what we already got in place?" And so, that really becomes the crux of improvement for us. Because again, we're in a pretty good place, but we're restless in an effort to further improve that. Specific to the climate goal, survey the May 2017, 80% of students, 10 through 12, would indicate they feel connected to the high school. We were just short of that goal, 76.6%. I'm a little bit frustrated, I shouldn't say a little bit frustrated, a little bit, again, I'll use that word restless with this number as I was talking with Carrie earlier. We do a fall, our fall climate survey occurs at class meetings. We have a captive audience, and we literally stop and stare at them while they do the survey. The spring survey, the follow-up survey, doesn't have that setting to its advantage. So, we are sending that electronically. We announce it. We say, "This is the time to do it." But it, it doesn't have that same feel. As a result, we have a smaller percentage of students that, that are completing that survey at that time, as opposed to the first Friday of school when everyone's in school. And again, we're staring at them as they take the survey. So, there's nothing else to do other than take the survey as opposed to late in the year when, when obviously they're distracted in other ways. So, we need to find a solution to that. And there are some other mixes to our school climate initiatives that we're, we're going to look to read, to address as well. But again, that, that, the first goal and the third goal look a little bit identical in, in some ways, but I think you'll see the, the difference of the dynamic. The third one speaks to what we're doing in PLCs as a means of accessing the passing rate. So, our hope is that, that, our hoped-for percentage was that 96% of students, 912, would be passing all their classes, and we are at 94%. So, you'll see reference to some new programming that we're going to be doing to hopefully address that 2%. And then the 4%, of course, that, that goes above and beyond that. So, reflections on the 1617 plan, we continue to examine 100% passing rate as being something that's realistic. And I'll say that to my Big Nine colleagues, and they'll kind of tilt their head and say, "Really?" And then I tell them where we're at, and I say, "Oh, wow." And so, we recognize, like I said, that we're in a good place, and we really feel that with people like Carrie who are constantly swooping in and saying, "Well, what if we did this next year?" And, and really, that's where, you know, where I kind of feel like my, my purpose as a leader is to, to say yes, get out of the way, listen, and, and then kind of respond to, you know, any obstacles that, that those types of implementations occur. So, looking ahead to next year, we're looking at two additional, two more reading courses for students who are struggling in reading. And again, Lisa Vitale, another example of someone who comes in and says, "Well, what if we did this next year? And we added this, and we addressed this?" And we're looking at classes that are being designed for eight kids. And that's how pinpointing we are with our, our implementation of some of our intervention systems. We're talking about eight kids who will sit in a room and get the reading help that they need. And we're doing two different, two separate courses that are added to our already, I would argue in comparison to other high schools, pretty vibrant reading programs. Two new levels of, of support math through the ADSS funding that will address, again, 10 kids in that grade, 10 kids in, in 10th grade, excuse me, 20 in each grade, 10 at a time. But again, really cutting that pie into the little pieces that are required. And sometimes there's a, there's a tendency to say, "Wow, you're doing all of these things for, for this small little group of kids. What are you doing for that 80% in the middle?" Well, the reality is we're doing some great things for that 80% in the middle. What we are doing is we are, and the 80% in the middle are being successful in so many ways that we recognize that we need to emphasize those places for that, those smaller percentages of students who need that additional support or a different means of support for us to, to reach them. Again, continuing to focus on, on a passing, passing grades in all classes for all kids. And this is what I kind of talked about adjusting, we need to expand the idea of school climate just in the sense that I feel that if, if you look at what we are doing intentionally for academics, I think there's a little bit of a, "Well, I wonder if this will work for our school climate piece." And, and some of you board members will remember our student checklist process that we have done in years past, and we, we moved away from that just to try some different strategies. So, we'd like to move back to that, to something similar, not necessarily that exact structure, but something that gets to individual students rather than clusters to say, "Well, this many students..." And we really don't have a sense of who those students that are saying we're not connected are, so that we can't, we can get their individual stories and we can really then respond to, to the types of stories that we're hearing from them. So, moving ahead to our 1718 plan, and you'll see some, it looks very similar in some ways, we've nuanced it a little bit. Again, we're shooting for that 96% of students and 88% of students identified for intervention by MTSS staff to, to pass all of their classes for the coming year. And we're looking at those, those ADSS math courses, the additional reading courses, the peer helper piece that, that Carrie talked about, as well as, as other initiatives around that awareness of, you know, and we're talking about some formal implementation with SEL. But there's also, simply talking about social emotional learning puts it in the, the front of the brain of all staff to say, "Students come with something else other than academic levels." And so, so we begin to more frequently and readily view the students that we're staring at through those lenses. And if we can do that, that's hard to quantify, that's hard to measure, but it certainly is making a difference in terms of our, our delivery of programming for kids. We're going to try to increase by 10% the, the number of students who refer to feeling connected almost always or often. And I'm, I would like to asterisk here to say, if out of the social emotional, we come up with by September, a little better tool to, to, to measure and then to respond to that measurement, I would like the, the freedom to be able to implement that where we may see a year from now, we're talking about a different measurement tool, not necessarily, not moving away from a survey, but away from that specific target of being connected, that we may have something more specific or something much more measurable and respondable to, something to which we can respond. And then again, that 96% passing rate, our professional learning communities, our PLCs do some great things for kids. And what it, what it really is, is about a gift of time for the staff to, to do what they need to do to, to make those connections. And we have seen tremendous, again, hard to quantify, but, but tremendous growth among staff in the way they view our intervention systems. I think that we, we, the staff said, "Hey, we're pretty good. What do we need additional supports for?" But I think that the staff as a, as a, as a collective has really embraced the idea of, well, there are those students who bring different types of stories and different types of, of issues to the table. And the more programs that we have to respond to those students, the better off we're going to be. So, the types of things that we're going to, to do and the type, the ways we're going to measure these, and these are by those goals. And the MTSS data team, that's not date team, that's, could be a whole different initiative, wouldn't it? The MTSS data team, programming, ADSS program, which again is expanding, the peer helpers and the academic student coaches. And then for our climate goal, the student survey connections checklist, the peer helper piece with our continued Raider Nation initiative, which was just unabashedly stolen from the middle school. Student leadership representative assembly is something we've played with, looking at key leaders of all of our leadership groups and bringing them together almost like a representative, well, it is a representative assembly, to see if we can't move some mountains in terms of student, feeling that student leadership. And we'll have yet another with our peer helpers, another group of students from which we can pull those, those representatives. And then three, PLCs, again, that 80% Sound Core instruction, our MTSS ADSS supports, and simply the rigorous curriculum that our teachers deliver each and every day. And I did, I handwrote some notes, if I may, and hopefully Matt continues to give me the thumbs up on time. But one of the things we talk about with, in reference to something Ms. Duba had mentioned about the peer helpers and, and it is, it's a little bit frustrating at times when you know things are working or things are having a positive impact on kids, but you can't throw a number at you and say, "Well, this percentage of students passed this class because of this," or "Feel better because of this," or however that, that might, we might attempt to quantify it. But I interviewed some students, some of you may know I'm taking grad classes or have finished my grad courses, but interviewed some individual students about, about kind of what their connections are. And, and you're obviously very well familiar with the Torch program. And Torch, as much as it does for students in terms of their academics, kids time and time again refer to this thing they couldn't even identify as being a, I would call it a support mechanism, I would call it a comfort mechanism, I would call it an encouragement mechanism. All of these things that are, are, we, we can, I don't want to say we ignore them, but we certainly place them under the priority of how kids perform academically. But it was obvious that these students saw those things as having a heavy impact on their academic performance and their academic success because those were late in their first. So, as I, you know, here, we're talking about peer helpers, and we talk about the broader picture of SEL across the district. That's the type of scenario I imagine, is that the students who, we can remove those frustrations, obstacles, worries, anxieties, and say, "Okay, let's get to the, the purpose of, of learning and academic achievement." And then I would say, you know, again, we're, I mentioned that we shamelessly steal from, stole from the middle school with their pride initiative. The SEL piece, I think, you know, Dr. Hillman mentioned the, the year's delay, if you will, in terms of kind of a formal implementation. We really see this as an opportunity to see what they're going to do, and then how it makes sense for us to piggyback on those successes and those pieces that, that create a challenge so that we can truly optimize our impact on kids across that, that SEL program.
Great report. Awesome, awesome. Okay, so, questions, comments, board members have? Rob?
This is just a general question. Could you tell me what you mean by essential learning?
Sure, you bet. Well, so in every department, you know, and I would, I'm going to say every, I'm going to keep it general at department, it, it obviously happens at core level, at course level as well. But teachers are identifying, if you strip away everything that we would like the students to know, what are those things that they absolutely need to know? And some of it is about the sequential building from course to course or grade to grade. I go back way in my past, and this is probably going to date me, but now I can't even think, E.B. Hirsch, E.B. Hirsch talked about these, this, this list of K-12 things that you should know for everyone to be successful in, in the world, basically. I'm paraphrasing. But the essential learnings are really those, those pieces that teachers identify in their courses, in their departments, in their programs, 912. They're going to hear about what are, what are the pieces that kids absolutely have to have so that they can move on to the next level? So that when they get to be, you know, graduates, they're moving on and can become successful and informed citizens. And it's interesting because as I'm thinking about that, I would love to explore the notion of how those interplay across the disciplines. We do some, you know, anecdotal, accidental interplay, but we, we mostly preserve that conversation for within departments. So, it's a, it's an interesting thought I'm having to say, how, how can we blend those better in a way where it becomes more interdisciplinary? How do we think about essential learnings in that way? Thanks.
Great question. Ellen?
I have a comment. So, I'm really excited about this, and, and it's because of your and Carrie's presentation together, because I was thinking about some things that have been challenges in the past, which is identifying early this whole passing rate of how do you know that the students are failing and how do you? And, and I'm really excited because I look at this and I think about the peer helpers, and you're going to have this inside track because you were trying to figure out from a technology standpoint, how can we do this? How can we have the system start flagging it so that the, the teachers will know? But I think this is just going to be fantastic. And what I'm really excited about is, you know, 96% is amazing, and I can't wait for you to come back and say, "100%. We're going, we're going for it," you know? And I feel like you're so close. So, I just thank both of you and, you know, Greg too, but I just, I really appreciate seeing these reports and how the synergies that are going to come out this year. It's going to be really exciting. So, thank you.
Margaret?
I just have a comment too, from good to great, looking at that slide. And Midwesterners don't like to blow their own horns, but when you say that we're a pretty good school, I, I beg to differ. I think that we're an extremely good school and that there's always room for growth because the world is constantly changing. But from every report I hear from K through 12 here, we are an extremely good school. So, I'll, I'll blow the horn for our schools for you.
I appreciate that. I actually spent some time with how to phrase that exactly. But I will say this, and I think that what we're, in, in my reference to our school, and I, and I would agree with you, my reference to us as a pretty good school is, I think, is representative of how our staff continues to be restless about not resting on our laurels. Because I do have conversations, like I said, I'm not, I don't want to set us against other Big Nine schools necessarily, but I have conversations with colleagues across the state who hear our numbers and they're just, they, they, it's this response of, "How is that possible?" You know? And we have a wonderfully supportive community and, and an educated community, and so, we, we benefit greatly from that. But I also believe that our staff is just kind of constantly looking for those, those little nuances, those little twists. And I think what, what has sparked that even more so is, is programs like MTSS and ADSS where, where, like I said... like I said, we're doing things and we're putting some money in places where we're helping eight kids at a time, nine kids at a time. And when you start doing that, you begin to say, oh yeah, we can get from 94 to 96 and 96 to 98 because we're not stopping and saying, well, let's just keep doing this really great thing and just hope that the number goes up. That we're saying, okay, we're going to isolate those eight kids and doggone it, we're going to, you know, get them over the hump and we're going to move them along. And like I said, we have, you know, numerous staff, I mentioned Lisa and Kerry, we have numerous staff who just have that restlessness to say, okay, how do we do that with these kids? And what about these kids? And if we send these kids here and if we subdivide this, or if I do this, if I teach this course on this. And so it's exciting, you know, and part of it is just really getting staff to recognize the multitude of lenses through which students view this place and what we're trying to do. And I think that's the key, is it to say, what could they possibly be struggling with? Once you ask that question, it just opens up this huge window of, okay, then we're going to do this in response to that.
And it makes an extremely good school.
We think so too. But we're hoping.
I don't know if this question has ever been asked, I don't remember that it has been asked, but I'm going to try. And I'm not even sure I know how to ask the question. Well, what is the academic logic that 90%, 96% of all the kids will pass? Pass all the classes? And I used myself as an example where there were grades given in choral music, I would probably have been in the top 10%. I could throw, a farm kid, I could throw a 40-pound bale 60 feet, but I couldn't play volleyball. You know, and I got my D's in Viad and I got my A's in the other, some of the other things. So I'm saying, is everybody going to have the academic success and skill to be able to be successful and pass all the classes?
With the right supports, we believe so, yes.
Well, I didn't come with the right tools then.
Well, I don't know that that's true necessarily, Noel, but I think, I think there are a couple of things at play. One, I do think that we are smarter as an educational institution, and I mean Northfield High School specific, but I also mean our district and I also mean the educational institution, that we're smarter about how to respond to kids who struggle. I mean, there was a time when we said, it was probably a time when I was in high school, when if I would have struggled, it was, well, if I can't get some help from my parents. And in those five minutes after school, when I talk with the teacher, I'm kind of on my own. And that's no disrespect to the time period, but I think that we have gotten smarter about how do we address issues of struggling learners. I also think, in talking about that lens piece, is that a lot of what we are doing in terms of MTSS and Addis, and I think the PBIS initiative too, is it's acknowledging that all of the kids come with a slightly different lens. We have a group of kids who come with very similar lenses. They've got that profile of, you know, if I said these seven things, I would identify 75% of our student body. But that 25 has a massive number of lenses through which they're viewing the world and which we have to view them and through which we have to view them to help them in ways that are going to get them over that hump. So the hay bale volleyball analogy, which I don't quite understand, but...
I still match you probably.
But the piece there is to say that we have, we have physical education and wellness teachers who have gotten smarter about how do we work with students who may not necessarily be naturally gifted in that particular way.
I understand, that's my point. Yeah, and thank you.
You bet, absolutely.
Good question. Board members, other questions or comments? I know Dr. Hillman has a question.
Yeah, I just, I think when we, when we start talking, Joel, about 96 to 100% of kids passing, I think a natural extension of Noel's question, that people in the community based upon their experience in school could be, are we making it easier? Is the, are we making the content easier so that kids can pass? The academic equivalent of everyone gets a ribbon. I know that one of the key things in the academy is that if you go into any of those classrooms, the content and the rigor is the exact same, it's the level of support that's different. Can you just talk about how that manifests itself beyond the academy? Because I do think that's a fair question, that people with their background, their own personal background at school, well, they just must be making it easier. We all know that that's not the case. How can we as a district and for our board members to articulate that when, you know, how is it possible to have 100% of kids pass? You're saying it is possible and we're not doing something lesser than what we did before.
Right. Yeah, and we're, I think we're doing more. I think that there, I would argue that at, I think there may have been a time in our history when 80% of students were passing all of their classes and fewer kids were at the level of rigor they are now. Because the response through systems like MTSS, but the response from individual teachers is also greater. So there is this, you know, if I know there's this system in place like MTSS that is going to help struggling learners, for some reason I'm going to do just a little bit more before I hand that student off. And there's no formal handing off process, I'm speaking a little more metaphorically there, but I am going to, we talk about teachers who, well, that we know they'll capture that struggling learner. We talk about seniors at the end of the school year that are going to on the bubble. And we're looking at through the lens of saying, the teachers will do what they need to do. That doesn't mean, you know, water it down. That means they are going to spend some extra time and they're going to do some reteaching and they're going to do some enrichments in a way that gets the student the knowledge and understanding they need to pass those courses. So again, I would come back to Noel's question, I think we're a lot smarter about how we respond to struggling learners in a way that says, even though our numbers may look different, I think that we are, we are expecting more of kids and we're getting those expectations met from more kids than perhaps we used to, simply because we have so many systems in place that allow us to address those needs collectively in mass, that 80%, but also in smaller groups and in these minuscule groups of six and eight and nine. Thank you, Joel.
Excellent, excellent. Any final questions or comments?
Thank you. This is excellent report and I agree with Ellen's, very exciting things happening. So thank you.
Okay, so those were our two, our three report items. We'll move now to items for individual action. Our first item is the school bus transportation contract with Benjamin Bus for 2017 through 19. Val Burtz Dorf, Director of Finance, will do a brief overview and then I will ask for a motion prior to discussion or questions.
Good evening. So since about the middle of April, we have been going through the formal process to get quotes for transportation. And as you all know, we have a wonderful contractor here in Northfield who's been a great, a great partner for us, a really good asset to our community. So we have, Benjamin Bus was the only quote that we received. So we've been working with him, Tom Watson from the Watson Consulting Group helped us through that process and he's here to answer any other questions you might have too. But we did settle on a 2% increase for the next, for 17, 18, and a 3% increase for 18, 19. It is a two-year contract with an additional two-year optional if we would so choose to implement that. The third and fourth years are tied to what we would receive from the legislature. So the lesser of 3% or whatever we would receive on the basic formula increase. So I know there's a lot of materials in your packet. It is basically the same contract, we just format it a little differently. So the actual quote document that you see where the rates go is actually part of the contract now, so we don't have to change all the language, we just update the rates basically moving forward. So if you guys have questions or want to do your motion, then we can answer any questions from you.
Yes, thank you, Val. Since this is an item for individual action, is there a motion to approve the school bus transportation contract with Benjamin Bus for 2017, 19 as presented? Moved by Jeff, seconded by Noel. Okay, board members, questions, comments? Rob?
I think Benjamin Bus is great, I'm just wondering, is there like a sense that Northfield, is there turf so no one bids against them?
I would say there probably is a little bit of that. I think most people know that that's the case. I think it might be different if they knew we were unsatisfied with the service, but we haven't been, they've been very good to work with. So I do think there is some of that.
Other questions? I had, other questions done? Okay, I had a question and a comment. Can you explain what the future fuel cost liability, how that works?
So that is basically a clause that we really haven't had to implement recently, but basically if the cost of fuel goes over $2.75, we reimburse Benjamin Bus for that additional cost, is roughly how it works.
So that number, does that vary each year then, based on, or is that sort of a set?
Nope, it's 2.75. So anytime the price is over that, then we would pay the difference, basically.
Okay. And you're saying we've not ever used that?
No, we have used it, but not recently because the price of fuel has been lower. So...
Margaret? I just had a comment, because I won't be able to do this again in this meeting. I want to say that, Val, because of your excessively amazing stewardship, when things come up in answers in the public, I can without a doubt always say that the numbers put forth financially from you and from Dr. Hillman are transparent and thoughtful and extremely well-done and I can always count on your information. So I know this is a strange time to bring that up around a school transportation bill, but I just wanted to publicly say that it gives me great faith in the work, the financial stewardship that's been done by our administration. So thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So I had one comment, Val, you alluded to it, but I think it's really important to just really talk about how amazing Benjamin Bus is. And I first, you know, really got a sense for that when Dr. Richardson was here and had been a superintendent for over 30 years and worked with numerous transportation companies. And single-handedly Benjamin Bus is the best he had ever worked with. So I just wanted to talk about, I know board members recall that we had gotten an email back in February about Governor Dayton announcing February 22nd, 2017 as first ever Minnesota School Bus Driver Appreciation Day. But I thought Jenna Dartis, who is the manager of safety director for Benjamin Bus, sent out a really detailed email, which I really appreciated hearing about how the ways they were going to celebrate their school bus drivers. But one thing, she had a couple things in here that I think really points to how significant they are as partners in what we try to do every day. So she said that at the beginning of 2016, 17 years, 16, 17 school year, they had acquired over 400 years in safe driving with their drivers combined. We know the tenure of their bus drivers were, have the fortunate opportunity of having breakfast with them when Nancy hosts the Bridgewater Bus Driver Breakfast. And we know they've had, you know, but 400 years of, you know, tenure and combined for all of their drivers. And the other significant thing that Jenna always says to her drivers at meetings is, you are the bookends to our students' day. They begin and end with their bus driver. And I was thinking about Menominee Falls and how everybody buys into what's happening and to the, ensuring that the educational experience of our students is what it needs to be and for the bus drivers to take that piece so seriously, to understand that they're not just transporting our kids to and from, they are really a significant influence and make an impact in their lives. And I just think that's so great that she has the analogy of the bookends to our day. So it's just always a pleasure to be able to highlight that amazing work that Benjamin Bus does for our district. So we thank you for the efforts of putting the contract together. If there are no other questions or comments?
I'd just like to point out that the question before about, you know, other companies quoting, and every so often when we do a transportation contract, we will have some interest, but I'd like to point out even in this contract, in three of the four years, it's very likely that Benjamin Bus won't even receive an inflationary increase. The latest IPD that I've seen is roughly about 2.2%. So in the first year, they're not even getting an inflationary increase. You could argue if trends continue, they would get an inflationary increase in the second year, but if we're tying it to what the legislature gives us, it is an increase to the per pupil basic formula. I have 20 years of data that says they're not going to get an inflationary increase in year three and four, should that be the case. So with renewal for two years, the option for year three and four, that's the partnership that we have, that this company is barely getting an inflationary increase over the life of the contract.
Okay, excellent. Okay, so there's a motion and a second to approve the school bus transportation contract with Benjamin Bus. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to the long-term facilities and maintenance and tenure plan. We have Jim Colseth, Director of Buildings and Grounds, if you want to just do a brief overview and then again we'll ask for a motion prior to questions and discussion.
Certainly, thank you. The legislator created the long-term facilities maintenance program, pardon me, to provide funding for deferred maintenance and life safety items within all of our schools. The LTFM works in conjunction with our existing tenure plan and using that plan, we identify various items of deferred maintenance and choose the plans to move forward and projects to move forward. The tenure plan is a live working document that Val and I both use to plan these projects. It evolves every year and it reflects changes as different needs are identified throughout each school year. Part of the decision-making involves budgetary questions, needs of facilities questions. And in getting that input, I get input from building principals, head custodians. And this year, we also, because of our DSLT site visits and working on site, I received a lot of input from teaching staff. And so there were several projects that we moved forward this summer that were a direct result of comments from staff members. So I'm very pleased that that's working well. In your packet, there is a chart that goes over, briefly goes over some of the UFR's code, finance code categories, physical hazards, environmental, health and safety items, asbestos removal, fire safety, indoor air quality and these pieces. These are just some of the examples of the funding. And this year's tenure plan, this middle also includes our indoor air quality plan. This is required by the state and this will be the first time that Northfield Schools has adopted this plan. And so it does require your review and approval. It goes over briefly, I'm sorry, it goes over in detail, the acceptable levels for our indoor equality.
Brief, that's for sure.
No, it is not brief. And so it goes over what the acceptable IAQ levels are and the steps that we take to maintain that. And it also reviews what we need to do if we have to improve our indoor equality. And beginning in 2015, the district was required to report all of these expenditures using the template provided by MBE and Val follows that. And again, her and I worked together on this, her doing the majority of the nice work with the charts and things that are so easy to work with. So that's it. Do we have any questions?
Excellent. So since this is an item for individual action, is there a motion to approve the long-term facilities and maintenance tenure plan? Moved by Margaret? Second by Ellen? Okay, questions or comments for Jim Colseth? Ellen?
So as you mentioned, the air quality piece wasn't brief and then there's a lot of fine print to kind of comb through. I know we've, we've had this presented to us before and you did such a thorough job in having done the, you know, all of the work that we've gotten to the point where we're thinking about the bonding, we looked at it in detail. But if there were a couple pieces that the community might say, well, what's different? What's new? Is there anything that we should be, you know, you've done a nice job of giving some of the expenditure examples with the UFR's finance codes, anything that people might notice that you'd say, well, sure, in the next two years you might see this or, I mean, sometimes we have a big roof, you know, like Bridgewater.
Oh, as far as projects that we, that are being completed now. This summer, we've got a fairly good project going on at Sibley with some carpeting, some flooring being done, some asbestos abatement. And also as a direct reaction to some of the staff comments there, we're also replacing all of the casework cabinets, sinks and things in six classrooms. Another project that we've, that we're working on is refurbishing the middle school tennis courts. They're pretty much not in playable condition at all. And that was completed just a short time ago. So I encourage you to all try tennis, they're beautiful. Some parking lot repair, things like that. We did just complete the roof. We do have some building controls for HVAC and indoor equality controls. Some of those are being updated at Bridgewater as well as the components. We can't get parts for them anymore for that system. And some carpeting at Bridgewater also. And some carpeting at Bridgewater also. Not so much happening at the high school for obvious reasons. We do have a column and you probably can see that in your packet on the far right, some, like to call it the 11th year out of the tenure plan, and those are the projects that would be on hold. If we need to go there, those include things like windows at the high school, windows at Longfellow and those types of pieces that we're going to hold off on for now.
Excellent. Other questions or comments? Rob?
I have a question about, for the indoor air quality, about plants where it says up to three plants are permitted per room. And I've been in elementary school classrooms with a little styrofoam cup with this plant for each student. And I'm wondering if that's, that educational activity is not going to be allowed under this.
No, the idea is there is, some of the staff really enjoy plants and they would have more mature plants. So it's to avoid some classrooms becoming a jungle because the soil and the watering of the plants tend to contribute to the poor indoor air quality in the room. As far as those instructional pieces where, you know, each student can have an individual plant and things like that, I mean, that's perfectly fine.
If I can just point out that, you know, we're a few years into the long-term facilities maintenance planning process. And if you remember, former Northfield Senator Kevin Dahl was the chief author of this bill in the Senate that really consolidated, you know, the previous deferred maintenance and the old health and safety program. And the intent was to make sure we could have more flexibility in using those dollars to maintain existing facilities. So all of the things that you heard Jim talk about, things like the casework at Sibley, that's good stewardship. That's updating a building, reinventing it. We don't have any plans on our current master facilities plan to do significant renovation in those areas of Sibley. There are some other things, of course, with the master facilities plan. But that's exactly what the legislature intended. The legislature intended districts to be able to have the flexibility to look at, what do you need to do to update your schools to keep them instructionally appropriate? And the pieces that you've just heard from on all levels are those, and it also said, you can spend those dollars on things that aren't as exciting, but just as important like parking lots. No one wants to pay for a parking lot, but everyone's upset when the parking lot is in disrepair. And so people only notice it when you allow it to go too long and going Jim and back to Paul Bell and even, we were, this was not new for us. You've seen a tenure plan for a long time. Now it's just required and you're required to take annual action for it. So really appreciate Jim and to really emphasize, our district-level leaders have been working two days per year, office-ing out of each school. So they spend 10 days a year out of their office, 12 days a year out of their office, onsite somewhere else, listening to the concerns of all staff and talking with them and building relationships. And you're seeing the direct result of that, that a lot of these things are not just something that a group of committee members decided. It was informed by people who are working in the spaces. I can't think of anything better. So, well done, Jim.
Yep, that's just, it was perfect. Yep, the project at Sibley, those six classrooms being renovated. And also neglected to mention the sidewalk up at the middle school that was so broken and heaved up every year, people were tripping on it. And that's being worked on as well. And that also came directly from working onsite. So that's just, that's an awesome program.
Excellent. Well, I think too, the fact that you are, it speaks well of your managerial style that you're very approachable. And so we appreciate that you have that rapport with the staff in the building. So thank you for all your hard work. I know it never lightens up for you why some people might be kicking back a little bit. Yeah, not so much for you. So thank you for all your work.
Very welcome. I'm really excited to watch the staff at Sibley come back this year to see their new rooms. That's the exciting part for me.
Good. Oh, it's all good. Thank you so much. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the long-term facilities maintenance tenure plan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item for individual action is pretty straightforward. It's the fiscal year 2017 audit engagement letter. Is there a motion to accept the 2016, 17 engagement letter from Clifton, Larson, Allen in the amount of $23,300 plus expenses? Moved by Noel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rob. Any questions or comments on this motion? No? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Last item for individual action is the resolution regarding Christopher Columbus Day. If you want to briefly explain that.
So just to remind board members that Minnesota statute says that public business cannot be transacted on Christopher Columbus Day unless the Board of Education passes a resolution that states it's not a holiday for the district. This is something that Northfield Public Schools has done for many, many years. And so we're simply asking to take the annual required action so that, basically, we usually have a school board meeting on Christopher Columbus Day. And so the fact is, we just need you to take that action now so we can actually conduct business that day.
Okay, excellent. Is there a motion to approve the resolution regarding Christopher Columbus Day? Moved by Margaret, is there a second? Second by Jeff. Since this is a resolution, I guess prior to the vote, are there any questions or comments board members have? Okay. This is a roll call vote.
Calangelo.
Aye.
Hardy.
Aye.
Iverson.
Aye.
Quinell.
Aye.
Strablon.
Aye.
And Pritchard.
Aye.
Okay, excellent. We'll then move on to items for the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were some personnel items in the table file that were added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Ellen, is there a second? Second by Rob. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
And Madam Chair, I would just like to highlight that in the consent agenda this evening, we had two longtime employees retire. Tom Grootman, current Activities Director at the high school, after 30-plus years with the district, has about the first half his career as a sixth-grade teacher and then for the last 15 or so years as the high school Activities Director. Of course, Tom's made a significant difference in activities here in Northfield and throughout the state, having served as the President of the Minnesota State High School League. No small honor. So I just felt the need to call out that particular retirement. And then, of course, Donna Hall, a longtime administrative assistant at Greenville Park, really a face, one of the faces of Greenville Park for many, many years, also retired as effective on June 30th. And both of those positions are posted and we're seeking replacements. And again, those are folks who will be difficult to replace, but we'd just like to call out when we have longtime employees retiring. And in this case, both Tom and Donna are well-known throughout the community. So thank them for their service and wish them luck in their retirement.
Excellent. Items for information, referendum update. Dr. Hillman?
So if we can just take a little trip down memory lane again, no, I'm just kidding. I'm not going to go through the entire piece with you here. Our last meeting, you directed the school district administration to be able to begin the process of preparing for the November 7th election. We have done so in earnest. And so I'm not going to go through all the pieces that have gotten us here in terms of this piece, because we've gone through that before, but of course, I gave you a recap in your packet. But a couple of things that I want to point out is that we're currently working with ATS and R to be able to complete the education, the MDE review and comment component that's required. We've also been working with Tom.
I don't think we voted on the consent grouping.
We have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
No, thank you for noticing that. We were moving along, so I appreciate it because we can't leave a motion without action.
Sorry.
Okay, so we had a, we had a motion and a second for the consent grouping. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay. So referendum update.
Yeah, I'm going to start again because I was noticing there was a little bit of activity. So.
Then I thought maybe it was me, I lost my mind. I forgot we voted.
Thank you, Margaret. We really appreciate that.
So again, in June, what you directed administration to do is begin preparations for a November 7th election for the purpose of repealing and replacing our current operating levy with an operating levy would be at the maximum allowed by the state for a 10-year period with inflation. And also a second question around implementing our master facilities plan, $109 million bond question that would include a potential new high school, a potential new elementary school on the same site as Greenville Park, repurposing the current Greenville Park building as an early childhood center and some modest additions and renovations at Bridgewater, Longfellow and Sibley. We've been working in earnest on that. And so far, what we've been doing is, we've been working with ATS and R to look at the review and comment process that's required by MDE. We've also been working with the law firm Knutson, Flynn and Deans, specifically Tom Deans, to prepare all the necessary ballot language and also the process for identifying polling places. Because since we are not, there's not a general election this time around where all of our precincts would be open by default, we're looking at what is the way that we can make sure that people have great access to polls while also being good stewards and making sure that the parts of the election that we have to run, we're doing so in a logical way for everyone. So we're working on that. In addition, we're working with our financial consultant, Ellers, to finalize all the tax tables and those kinds of things that are necessary to make sure that we can inform the public about what these, the bond and the levy referendum would, how it would impact them and their taxes specifically. And of course, we're also working to prepare communications for the informational campaign that the district is required to conduct in terms of to make sure that people know the facts of what we're asking for, how they would impact the school, and making sure people have enough information to make an informed decision at the polls on November 7th. One of the things that we have identified is it's a unique piece of the calendar for people who've been on the board for a while. You know that when we've done referendum in the past, we typically will approve the ballot language in the polling places at the first meeting in August. And if you recall, that's what I had shared with you was our plan. Well, if you think about it, our first board meeting in August is on August 14th. That's the latest that a board meeting, our first board meeting could happen in August. It's because the fact that we have, the first Monday isn't until the 7th, right? So we have to wait till the second Monday. We're required, if we're going to combine polling places, which we have typically done when we have an off-year election, we're required to take that action 90 days before, more than 90 days before the election. We can't change them within 90 days. So between that and a couple of other items, we are going to need to ask you to have a special meeting to do some, just some very brief referendum work, just to take the actions that the board needs to do in order to prepare for the election. So what I was hoping to do during this update is, Danita and I have looked at doing something in late July in terms of, we're looking at potentially July 24th, which is a Monday. It's two weeks from tonight, actually. And we're just, want to informally canvass the board this evening if that night would work for you. We don't believe it will be a very long meeting. It would certainly be less than an hour and I'm even thinking it might even be less than a half an hour because it's not the first time you're hearing this. So what we'd like to do, if we could take that action on July 24th, we would be able to work with the various county auditors to make sure that those things are going in the right direction and then get all of the necessary items done so we can make sure that we have hit all the timelines.
I believe we would just have to have quorum.
Correct.
Although we would like to have as many board members as possible, but in light of being very cognizant of the dates. So is there just an immediate reaction to July 24th for board members?
That's fine.
Okay. Okay, so Noel, Margaret, Ellen, Rob, looks like it's, we'll all be able to attend.
And so what our goal that night will be, what we're hoping to have for you that evening is we will for sure, the one thing we will for sure have is our proposed combined polling places. So we will be working with the city of Northfield within the city precincts where they're also holding an at-large election for a city councilor. So if you live in the city of Northfield, you will be going to the same polling place you normally do. We will also have some rural precincts that will be running and that's what we're working with the county auditors to get their expertise on how they think it makes sense to combine those polling places so that we have a geographically centered area, but at the same time can be good stewards in terms of how we run those polling places in off-year elections. So we'll come to you with a recommendation that will allow us to work with the county auditors to make sure that those things are done in a timely fashion. We also anticipate to be able to have the official ballot language for you so that we can approve that and get that moving. And then my hope is also, one of the things that changed in this legislative session is that we're now required to present our review and comment at a public meeting. Now, that public meeting can be a board meeting. And so what we're hoping, that might be too tight of a timeframe. We may have to wait till the first meeting in August to do that, which would still be plenty of time within the timeframe. But we are going to try to push to have that review and comment ready for you that evening too, so we can do all those referendum-related items at the same meeting. So I appreciate everyone being willing to do that and appreciate the team. You know, we're just, Danita already working so hard on the election and Val and Jim and Aaron and others who are really just helping make sure that we get all those boxes checked and so that we can continue and begin to share more with the public about our vision of how both referendum could really support students within the system.
Excellent. Is there a time that we're looking at?
I would say we would do the standard seven o'clock time.
Okay, yeah. And we would convene in the media center.
We convene right here in the media center.
Excellent. And Danita's always good about keeping us reminded of things like that. So actually, it's a segue to future meetings. So our next meeting is actually now a special meeting on Monday, July 24th at 7:00 PM in the media center, followed by our August meetings, Monday, August 14th and Monday, August 28th, also at 7:00 PM in the high school media center. And just a reminder that immediately following this meeting, we'll reconvene for a closed